We are gonna call this meeting to order a little-
Late this evening due to technical difficulties at 7:12 PM on Tuesday, March 12th. And Clerk Cosson, would you do a roll call for us, please?
I'll do. President Frankel.
Here.
Commissioner Brooks.
Here.
Commissioner Colbert.
Here.
Commissioner Lot.
Present.
Commissioner Pravat. Trying to log in.
Is trying to get it.
Exactly. Police Chief David Burst.
Here.
Public Works Director Darnell Bond. Town Administrator Carol Richardson.
She is not going to be with us this evening.
Okay. John Hoetsen, Town Clerk, here.
All right, thank you. We will move on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is founded one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and-
All right. And let's move on to review of the agenda, and I'm gonna lean on you a bit more for speaking, Clerk Cosson, because my voice is going in and out.
Will do. Business A, Resolution 2024-06, Assignment of the Town's Contract with Conduit State and Local Solutions Incorporated for Automated Speed and Red Light Camera Enforcement Services to Medexo Incorporated and authorizing the mayor to consent to the assignment. That'll be a board vote. B, Fiscal Year 2025 Projected Revenue, Board Discussion. C, Fiscal Year 2025 Projected Expenses and Requested Funding, Board Discussion. D, Fiscal Year 2025 Capital Improvement Plan, Board Discussion. E, Fiscal Year 2024 Budget Amendment, Board Discussion. And F, Church Street RFP, Board Discussion. Six Administrative Updates, Seven Public Comment, Three Minutes, Eight Preliminary Approval of Next Meeting Agenda, and Nine Adjournments.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
I would just make the one suggestion, maybe we, the one item that we're voting on, maybe we slide that down later in the agenda until we are sure Commissioner Pravat is on the line.
That sounds good.
Clerk Rehn.
Yes, okay. Right, so you got that, Clerk Cosson?
Yes, I did. I'm still trying to-
So we'll-
Hold on.
That's fine. We're gonna just move right into Item B. And-
Okay, hang on one second.
So this is just kind of a- What everyone has in their purple, in what Clerk Cosson is gonna be putting online is, you know, as we're working on balancing the budget and making the revisions. So there's an updated version. There's been, you know, changes to continue balancing it since then. The other thing we did was, in the budget book, there is a guide to code. So if you look at your budget, or it says something, it has numbers. For example, seventy-three ninety is public works weather-related expense. So there's a guide that tells you what thirty-nine seventy is. And so we wanna work on, you know, making that a little stronger, but I put that with it. So with regard to revenue, there aren't any major changes. I did put in the Circuit Rider Grant, which hadn't been plugged in there. I think if we go down to the grants, as we get to the capital improvement- A lot of these grants are funding capital improvement. But the Circuit Rider Grant actually funds staff time. So that is, we have seventy thousand with, because we're working with two other municipalities, that we'll be hoping to ask for at least the same amount next year. And then we have a number of different grants, there's Streetscape Grant, which is from the county, and it pays for things like the benches and the horses and all that kind of beautification work you see going on for public works. We have the facade improvement program, which is what's used for our downtown businesses to improve the facade and internal features, and that is funded through DHCD. The ARPA grant is taken care of. We needed to have it accounted for by this year, and we have. We are working on the backend accounting of that and doing the reporting. We have the two DNR grants, which are for the playground, which I believe, I don't know if Director Bond has joined us, but I believe that those, that the permits are actually moving now. Hopefully, we'll see that soon. Then we have a series of bond bills for Streetscape Works, design and actual construction, parking lot, which we're gonna look at later, and other parking improvements. And miscellaneous grants, things kind of like the Pepco grant that we get, that usually is for emergency response services and other sort of small grants like that. Oh, I guess the county. I'm not sure why Streetscape and DPWT are separate. Oh, I think Streetscape was the bond bill. It's weird. I'm gonna have to look at that. There's no numbers, so I gotta look at what's what in the category. So that's the grants, and those will need to get filled in as we work through the capital improvement budget. Any questions? Ideas for other sources of revenue? Okay. So we can move on. We can move on to Item C, Projected Expenses and Requested Funding. I don't know if you guys have questions on any items, have places you see potential cuts? Because that's really where we're at, is having to make cuts.
Aren't we doing something different with accounting as far as bookkeeper-wise?
Oh, yeah, we actually, Carol and I talked about this. We decided to stick with also doing it because they'll be able to do- They're doing it part-time. It's kind of part-time, and there's not a cost of benefits and all of that.
No issues? I'm just, I'm just saying-
It's cheaper.
So, right, so do we have the bookkeeper's salary factored in here so we can-
So I'm pretty sure I took out the bookkeeper's salary. Your number should be lower. And now I changed it because I see the- I'm working off two places, just to make sure I keep track of everything. So salaries, yes, that's why it's lower. That's what the lower salary is. It's removing them. You see that last time it was three sixty-four, and then this time it's three fifteen.
Okay, yes.
And just to make everyone aware, I had add the Circuit Rider Grant was only in there at fifty thousand and at seventy. So the number, there's a new number, so it's like three-three-five. Circuit Rider Grant, because it will actually be an employee run through salaries, even though it's a grant, so that's why it shows up there.
Media Relations.
Yes.
So- So couldn't we do that in-house? Do that in-house. I mean, look at all the slides and stuff. I mean, is it similar to something that John can do?
It's more, more having someone around if something happens. If there's a lot of media attention, if there's an incident, there's gonna be-
So then they should be contingency funds rather than-
That's why. So we pay our media person only when we use them, right? So that's the budget we estimated last year. We have not used that budget fully this year. So, I mean, we could reduce it, but I wouldn't reduce it by a lot because if something does happen, we need to be able to bring him in.
Yeah, because couldn't we get, you know, some of this information that the media relations person would be putting out from our attorney? I mean, couldn't they-
Hate me?
Mm-hmm. Because the legal end of it is usually, it's gonna come from the attorney anyway.
Yes, but I think there's some level of finesse to things that isn't necessarily- What if there was a really big incident here? Someone, something big happened, right?
Oh, yeah.
And then the news is in all of our faces, or at least definitely my face, right? Do we feel like I can handle that without somebody, you know, and because I don't have experience with that, I feel like-
Okay.
I would want somebody to guide me through that.
That's fair.
And not-
That's fair?
Yeah.
I understand.
So that's-
But I'm, I was just thinking on, on the flip side of that, because-
Yeah.
Even the media relations is gonna have to meet with our attorney so they know what to say, because-
For something.
Yeah, because they would have to be briefed by their attorney to, you know.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's hard because nothing has happened, right? But you see these incidents happening every day. It's kind of one of the things that gets talked about a lot at these mayor's meetings.
No, but you brought up a good point, that is, if, I didn't think about it that way. If somebody's in your face, you, you need somebody who can do the, be the buffer.
Yeah, we could put them out there-
Yeah.
To handle questions and that kind of thing.
I, I agree. General, well, government relations. Let's talk about that. Assist bond bill, other funding and watch legislation.
Our law, our current relations firm that is in Annapolis, watching legislation, advocating for funding for us, et cetera.
Do we still need a planning firm?
We do not. I think I took that out. I took it out of mine. So, I mean, we do and we don't, but like our, the firm that we brought in, that was ARPA-funded, and ARPA money is gone. And I think we don't have ARPA funds. We need to cut the budget. I think we have to make that call, right?
Yep.
And work on implementation with staff, even though we don't like that. But no, so the negative nineteen you see there?
Mm-hmm.
So that'd be forty.
No, so the negative nineteen is sticking in there under professional services, because what happens is all the professional services come in and they get coded into general government, and then at the budget adjustment, the accountant takes some of the general or professional services and puts it into police. And the reason we do this is because the state gives us police state aid. And it gives us police state aid based on our police budget. So we try to-
So you have to make, you have to make sure we have a big enough bill so we can get funding.
Right. We try to make sure that if we can account for something in under police, you know, pose under police, like-
That makes sense.
So that is also why their budget is larger.
Okay.
So we can get extra funding. Yes, Commissioner Pravat is here. And I should say that Commissioner Pravat, if you just have questions or wanna talk, just go ahead and chime in. We're kind of going through the budget right now to see if there's any questions on specific items or places people want to cut. I'm looking into seeing if we can cut some more out of the dues and subscriptions.
Dues and subscriptions. So how much is it per person that you guys are paying for dues and subscriptions? Because how much of a big difference would it be if like you cut mine off?
So dues and subscription is actually not related to each of us. Like, it, I'm almost tempted to break it out, actually.
Yes, because where do you stick our subscriptions for our tablets?
Well, that's mobile phones.
Oh, okay.
Tablets are in the mobile phones from that point. I wanted to just ask if, if you use your iPad. Like, if you use your iPad at all, great, carry on. If you don't use your iPad at all, then maybe we can save a few bucks on the phone bill. So up to you guys, just communicate if you use it or you don't, or if you don't use it, let us know. But dues and subscriptions, like, so it is where all the professional organizations go, so like MML and LLC, which we won't have to pay for anymore because they're affiliate. But it's also things like Adobe and other- Clerk Cosson, you probably know what some of these things are. They're like things we need to-
Oh, MML comes out of here too?
Yes.
Comes out of it. But there's also like, like office stuff.
Yeah, there's dues for like the Clerks Association. We paid the dues out of that. There's other subscriptions to other things the town has signed up for, so.
So do you actually buy stuff, like maybe office supplies under this as well, or you are breaking it out in a separate category?
See, what I'm saying is I think it's, I think dues and subscriptions should be separate.
Yeah.
So is anything that's a subscription, you can put it under there. Well, we can't necessarily cancel because-
No, I'm saying, like, you know, I can understand you separating it because you have your, you know, like you have your safety dues, you have like Aoba dues, where you taking classes and stuff like that, and you have safety programs, so you have dues for that. Subscriptions is a little different, because of course, you can either keep the subscription or not keep it. But I can understand how you wanna break it out so you can see exactly what each item entails, or which line item it goes.
Yeah, and it's, because it's also like other things, like we were subscribed to Flipping Book last year. That's why you had these really cool online documents that you could flip through.
Mm-hmm.
So we unsubscribed because we cut that budget last year.
Okay.
But some of the other subscriptions have increased. So I think it's confusing because there's subscriptions for, like our QR code generator, that goes in there. But that makes it seem like it's a stack development thing, because it's in with dues, but it's not actually.
It's not, or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
That should be broken out.
Mm-hmm.
With software licenses that we're paying for, are we actually using one and two, getting use out of?
Right, so we need to review that so that we know exactly-
Yes.
Uh, you know, because all of us, I don't know, personally, I can forget that I have a subscription and, and like, and I'm like, oh, I'm still paying for that? You know, I mean-
Yeah. So I know we eliminated a bunch of unused Adobe licenses this year, some Microsoft licenses, but it's still expensive, so we have to figure that out and figure out if maybe it belongs somewhere else, but-
So where does like, if someone needed a computer or some office furniture, chair, whatever, where does that come out of?
That comes under general supplies, though I think the computers may go under, I, no, that's professional services. So they should go under general supplies.
Yeah, but we can, why can't we cut that a little bit? Wait, we have eight thousand on the bucket, cut that a little bit.
So general supplies, last year we budgeted thirteen thousand five hundred. We had spent around four thousand by December, so basically our accounting firm said, you're on target, spend a thousand.
Now for the office, the landline and the mobile phone, I don't see anything on the mobile phone tied into the landline.
That is a great question.
Because it looks like we're only spending, by that same logic, we've only spent- Actually, we shouldn't get to twelve thousand, but if that includes the-
Yeah, I changed it to ten thousand this afternoon when I went through there.
So the landline phones?
Because I did math. I mean, I know the accountant did math, and it's, that's their job, but I have, we have to balance it, right?
Yeah, that mobile phone, because there are people who have mobile phones.
Yes.
Yeah.
I know that's something that Town Administrator Richardson was working on.
And that's a discounted rate, because if-
Well, and figuring out government- Their government. We have a government rate.
Get a government rate.
We have a government rate, but there were like unused phones and free phone upgrades and line, so she went through that and got that all resolved. I just haven't had a chance to speak with her about it because I've been at a conference.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Hi, I'm sorry I'm not there in person.
We miss you. Do you have any budget questions while you're online?
I do not. It sounds like you guys are going line by line. I don't have any questions right now, but I do like the questions that Karen is asking, so.
I have one about the petty cash, networking, and community outreach, because we already have money in the-
Can't remember how much.
Ah, yeah, and I don't have my glasses on, I'm just trying.
Oh, yeah, she's other, yeah.
So what does all, you know, what's the petty cash for and all that stuff that, you know, for buying little snacks and stuff when we have something?
That's partly what that's for, and a lot of that, Kyle classified those things in a way that I have to go through these items, and then there's another place that I've been putting items, and I need to figure out where I should have classified them. After Kyle left, I put them in one place, anyway. But petty cash, like, is really for, uh, sometimes we, like, might need, we've run out of paper, right? We ran out of paper, it had, we'll run to Staples, get paper. It's like that kind of thing.
Then you're paying more money too, when you do it that way.
Well, we try not to run out of paper, but it's not-
But I'm just saying, with stuff like that, you definitely pay more money.
It's not, I don't think we use petty cash. I don't know, Clerk Cosson, do you, you're around more to know how frequently, but I think we barely use it.
We hardly use petty cash.
So we got twenty-five hundred dollars. We cut it down a little bit.
Well, we're over budgeted this year on this, so that's, and we cut it down.
So about two thousand?
Um.
Or fifteen, eighteen hundred or something? What are we cutting it down to?
I've cut it two thousand for now, but I'm gonna highlight it in orange. I mean, you were talking about highlighting in orange.
Now, the Halloween event. We need, well, we should cut that to about fifteen hundred dollars.
I actually cut winter and Halloween to fifteen hundred.
And winter.
I've cut both to fifteen earlier when I was messing around. I think, and then this is kind of one of the questions, is you, you know, and, because we're trying to balance the budget, we have to also think about the events and the overtime costs, right? Like, we're looking at just the cost of buying stuff for the events and paying for vendors and stuff, but we're not actually thinking about the cost of overtime.
I was thinking about that overtime salary, but we already have a place for that.
Yeah.
I saw that. It was a line item, so I think we're good. Because we already have it in a separate place. It's not, you know.
Right. I just wanna make sure we're thinking about that when we think about the events.
Because now also we are, we are combining events so that we are cutting back as well.
What was the cost of Marlboro Day in twenty thirteen?
We tried to guesstimate that last year, because what we were saying is what happens is like, some of it is in here. Some of it, oh, you're saying it's not in here. No one actually put it, no, because this is this year's, last year's.
And- I think it's-
Carry on with your conversation, and I'll collect any information.
I think it's good that we, when we have these events, that we do a debrief and we talk about what we need to improve, what we-
We do that, yeah.
I mean, well, all of us need to be a part of that, because all of us see different things, right?
Yeah, you just used to get like a document from Kyle or-
I don't recall seeing that ever. Well, I think it's important because, and also, we need to streamline the expenses for these special events so that we know exactly what we're spending, and then we can anticipate, you know, what we're gonna spend the next fiscal year with, you know, a little bump, a little increase, but-
I think nothing's getting increased.
No, I'm just saying, like, you know.
Um, I think that, that we really have to think about sponsorships, and there's actually a grant that our grant writer found that, it's from Walmart, and it provides funding specifically for things like events. So I think we need to figure out how to have the events be covered better.
So, one of the reasons I asked about Marlboro Day, I'm sure it's controversial statement, but if we're scaling down other, what is the impact of whatever potential cut could be made to Marlboro? Thinking if you bring it down to maybe four thousand instead of fifty-four hundred, what, what are we losing for that amount? And I ask that question in conjunction with, on fifty-nine thirty, we see the town of Marlboro events.
I do.
Uh, it's forty-two hundred in there, one in seven hundred, so in this fiscal year, why it exploded? And how can we make sure that we're scaling that down?
Part of that problem has to do with, so the barbecue we had, they were sponsored. And so it, there was like a lot of money donated, but again, revenue, like, so that wasn't in the revenue category.
Gotcha.
And so we didn't account for expending those funds in that category. That is a part of this problem, and then the other part of it is like where I've categorized it, and so I've gotta look into that. But yes, we need to, you know, take a look at that. So Marlboro Day, and this is, this is the thing to kind of think about around Marlboro Day, is there's a couple of things that cost a good amount. One is get the blow-up inflatables for kids, generator for the DJ, which we're, we're looking into cutting that clause. But shutting down governor's that we drive.
Mm-hmm.
Like, it just has a cost. You've gotta get U-Hauls, you gotta get, because the last thing we want is them driving through our festival. So, you know, we can have a discussion about moving Marlboro Day to a location that doesn't require the same level of staff or the same level of equipment to shut down. that doesn't require the same level of staff or the same level of equipment to shut down, but then you're moving Marlboro Day from downtown, so that's part of my hesitancy to cut the budget, but I did find that it was fifty-two hundred dollars in a previous year. So, um.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that's, I think that moving Marlboro Day would be a hard task to, to accomplish, especially since we have the stage and you have to, you know, think about logistically where these, um, items will be.
Right, and just to be clear, we're talking about next year's Marlboro Day, not this year's Marlboro, but this kind of brings up another point, if, if we're gonna go after this grant, right? Maybe we budget two thousand dollars for Marlboro Day instead of five and we just have to make that up with grant sponsorship.
We can, how many, do we get good in sponsors?
Um, Corcoran got us a lot of sponsorships last year that saved the department a lot of money in their lineups.
So, so here's the thing, so I don't want to, my question was not to radically change Marlboro Day, it's our biggest, it's our biggest event. You know, we get a lot of sponsors, we get a lot of vendors, we get a lot of attention from, um, state and county, uh, towns, so I don't want to tie our hands, uh, in a way that radically changes the event. More so a question of, you know, what are some of the areas, if they exist, that we could, you know, to a, to a degree, pinch pennies a little bit here and there. Um, I wouldn't say cut it to two thousand for next year. I think that's a bit ambitious and like I said, it may tie our hands in terms of what we can actually do. Um, but I think it's something that we, that we look at it really as a grant, Marlboro Day this year, I understand really what the cost of all these things are.
Mm-hmm.
Definitely go after.
This is Alma.
Yes, Commissioner Pravat.
Um, if, if we, uh, decide on a budget now and then we eventually do get grants or sponsorships, how are we able to adjust that within the budget in the future?
Right, if we want a grant, we need to keep it the same and increase our revenue, so we could, right. So, um, one thing we have not done, Commissioner Brooks and Commissioner Pravat, this year that we normally have done by now is a budget adjustment. And the reason we haven't done it and we normally do is because we didn't have a town administrator and I was not able to get it done in time, but our town administrator put it on the agenda for tonight. Unfortunately, she is unavoidably not here, um, and, but she is gonna get us on track for the budget adjustment. And that's where you do things like that, like this is where the barbecue problem is gonna get solved. We're gonna increase the revenue for donations and we're gonna increase the budget for P O U M events, and then we won't be over budget. And if we didn't spend more money than we brought in, we're just accounting for it properly in the budget adjustment. So normally we start the budget adjustment in like December.
Mm-hmm.
And that's probably what we would do next year, um, so if, if we did find that this year we brought in sponsors or grants, we could make that adjustment to next year's budget when we get partway through the year.
Question about insurance, like when we do the insurance, it's talking about property, auto and other police insurance, do we each year try to get a cheap insurance plan or we just stick with the same one?
So, I'm actually gonna ask Chief first, but I think we're all completely insured through local government insurance trust, which is like.
The cheapest we can get.
If there is a. All the local governments together pooling their risk and it's really just the cheapest.
Good, and they give us a discount?
It's not, I don't know, um, Chief, are your, is everything insured through Legit for you?
I, I didn't hear the first part of the question.
Commissioner Brooks is wondering about car insurance and all that kind of insurance and if we shop around and if we need to shop around or we're, you know, cause with, I think it's under Legit and I'm trying to explain Legit, but you may understand both better than.
Yes, Legit is the local government insurance trust. That's the name of it, and that's the insurance that most of the municipalities use, uh, because they're a local government insurance company and they give us the best rate, so anytime that, for example, if somebody goes to driver's training that, uh, is awarded to credit towards reducing our, um, our premium, we not having any accidents also from year to year helps to reduce our premiums and stuff like that. So, yeah, Legit is basically the insurance company, uh, that most municipalities use because it, that's what it's designed for, it's local government. So all of our vehicles and most of our equipment, heavy equipment is insured through Legit.
Like when we buy things like, like we purchased the property, the, the insurance didn't go up. They just added it on. There's a lot of, it, it makes sense, like personally, I'll shop around.
Very beneficial.
But in this case, it actually, M and L kind of has a relationship with Legit and works to make sure that they're keeping their rates low for all of us.
Because I know with.
But yes, with us.
With us.
Exactly.
Homeowners, car insurance, everything shot up this year.
Yeah.
Even though we, some of us probably never had any issues with our home or cars.
Right.
They were, kind of recruit everything that they had to put out for other people, and I'm like, oh my goodness. So I was just curious about that, you know.
Yeah.
That's a good question. Very good question.
And they, um, are really good, like honestly, I think if you just wanted to ask them how they work, uh, they probably would explain to you. They, if we have, if they see something on their eyes and that could be a risk for us, they call us. They offer to do training. If we have questions about anything, we call them, um, you know, personnel, uh, equipment, um, gosh, I called them about the weirdest thing the other day, but it just like, anything you wouldn't think, you just call them. They answer your question, and if you've called them and then it becomes an issue, they represent us for free.
Oh, awesome.
So.
Well, I think, um, as far as this is concerned, I think that we should just look at it and, and individually.
Yeah, we can move on. I just wanted to give you guys time to ask questions.
And then ask, uh, bring up some questions later, cause I.
If y'all are comfortable moving on.
Devout.
I do not wanna rush you guys on this. I want you to understand it, so, uh, so we will move on, um, to the capital improvement. Um, and the, the town was never really able to have a capital improvement plan, so. The last board adopt, made a change to the charter to allow this, um, and what this does is it allows us to plan for the future, um. So, last year what we did was department head and I, and, um, we just, we sat down and we went through all the vehicles we had. What are our vehicles? What are they costing us? When do vehicles need to be replaced? Um, and we put that all in here, kind of as a replacement schedule. Then the thing we did this year was we said, what are all our roads? What do those roads need? What, when will they need them and what will that cost? Because they, one of the big problems with our roads, why we're finding that we have to spend so much money redesigning is because no one ever took the simple, uh, measure of seal coating that every other year. So that costs us money now because it was never done before, so, um, we went through and came up with, okay, Spring Ranch Drive, that's getting done once the weather clears up and the contractor schedules us. Well, in FY twenty-seven, it should be seal coated, cause it will last longer if we do that. And that, we estimated that to be, uh, thirty thousand dollars, so we tried to space it out so that it's not all happening in one year. Um, and most of these costs associated with the streets, um, are covered through the bond bill. This is an additional funding from us. Does anyone have questions about how that?
You said, you said it's covered through bond?
There's a bond bill, um, that we have for streetscape and street improvement.
So are we basically doing a fork, um, a budget forecast for the capital improvement?
That's kind of what it is, yes.
Okay.
It ties into this work, I still wanted to see if we can do something for the whole budget, like with that. And. Put the buildings in here, cause we really, we're talking about, and we didn't do this yet, cause we just kind of threw it in and haven't gotten to it, but like, we do need a bigger public work chart, we do need a bigger police department, town hall, like we just had to spend this money this year fixing HVAC system, which could have been anticipated and budgeted for, but it wasn't.
Right.
Um, and.
So do we do preventive maintenance on the equipment so that we can, um.
The, the maintenance number for town hall, uh, Director Bond and I worked together on that to make sure, like it factors in all the stuff for this year.
No, I'm talking about, like have a contract for P M services, preventive maintenance services, because that, um, that's gonna keep you paying less out of pocket.
Right.
Because if you can, you can fix it before it gets to the point where you have to replace it, it's definitely gonna save the town some money.
I'm not sure if Director Bond is on here, if you are correct, if I'm wrong, I believe that our foreman is certified, but I, I think, is Matt, Matt does this, our foreman? He's like certified, is that correct?
Certified on what?
Well, that's.
As of right now, he does not. Um, the generator, um, has a, uh, has a service contract. The, once the new HVAC is installed, we're working on new numbers for, um, an actual contract with Carrier, um, since that will be who is doing the install.
Yeah, I like Carrier. Uh, are you doing a P M contract with them as well?
Yes, and that'll be before you all want me to get those final numbers back.
So, I mean, obviously this is only five years right now. We're adding things as we go, but. We should be projecting these expenses up because then we can also put money aside in reserves for the intention. Commissioner Pravat, do you have any questions to talk about that? Just checking.
No, I don't.
So, we wanna move on, um, next item is the twenty-twenty-four budget amendment. Um, and I know that our town administrator, our town administrator had an emergency this evening, um, and was planning to address this with us. We've already talked about it a little bit, um, basically, right now what we're doing is we're planning the budget for the next year. There's things that are gonna happen, but we can't anticipate, right? There's, you know, money might come in in sponsorships or we might get a grant for something and then, you know, we have to account for that money going out. And that is a budget adjustment, and if we don't have a, like, category to put those things in to hold them until we adjust them, we have to do multiple budget adjustments. Um, so normally we do it mid, start at mid-year, so we've got a sense of what we're doing and then we do a final one right before the end of the year to tighten everything up, because at the end of the year, our budget needs to match our actual and it needs to be balanced. Um, you know, we, we have to have a balanced budget. We've balanced budget, we can't. That's, that's what will happen, um, for clean, I know that all our department heads are actively working to clean up categories that, um, with all the transition between town administrator, bookkeeper, all of that stuff, things did wind up in the wrong categories. That has to be cleaned up before we can do the adjustment. And so you'll see stuff shift around, cause it's in the wrong place, and then she'll bring that to us.
Okay, well, we can just put it back on the agenda for us the next meeting, so she can just explain her, um.
But I just wanna make sure Commissioner Brooks and Commissioner Pravat, do you have any questions about that process?
Yeah.
I don't have any questions about the budget adjustment process.
Thank you, um, so we will move on to the Church Street R S P, but then the last thing we'll do is vote. So, um, Director Bond, I'm gonna turn this over to you to talk to us about this R S P.
All right, good evening, everyone. Um, pretty much this, uh, is a very, very rough draft. It's actually going to go in front of our, uh, town administrators so that she can, uh, amend it a little bit, but pretty much, uh, it's, it's been revised a little bit, um, so that we could move forward with the design of the, um, parking lot. Um, the last time that this R S P was before you guys, it was for the actual construction, um, we only got one bid and, um, you know, it was kind of choppy as far as what was able to be completed and what wasn't. Um, so we thought with someone doing the actual design and, uh, giving the layout for how everything should go, the best way to optimize the spaces and things of that nature and the stormwater management, once we do put out the construction, uh, R S P, we should be able to get more bites, but, um, the, I actually have to go back and look at the budget for how much we're able to pay out, um, for this. I know one portion of it, uh, says a thousand, but I'm sorry.
I'm kind of cutting you off, cause that, remember we had this discussion about not putting amounts on the R S Ps?
Yes.
So maybe we don't need.
Yes.
Keep going.
I was, I was kind of getting to, um, I know the one that I submitted had that on there, but it will be, uh, taken off. Um, but I know we're hoping to stay under that number of one hundred thousand, but, uh, with design, as you know, things could get quite expensive. Um, so for this, this is everything that we were looking for. This is the motion lights, the solar canopy, the electrical drops from Pepco, um, the pay station kiosks, the stormwater management and paving, um, and the concrete pads, uh, for the vehicle charging stations. And that's pretty much it. Um, I'll take any questions if you guys have any.
So the, the plan is to bid out for the design and, and then also have it, have them design it with pieces and phases so that we can, correct?
Well, we, we're gonna have them actually, uh, do the design for everything and, um, depending on how much money is left, we'll determine how much of the construction can actually be done.
So we're looking at one, we're, the, the goal is one vendor who will design each one of these three.
Design and construct?
Design for right now, and then we'll go back out with an R S P.
For construction and potentially the same vendor could bid on the construction contract too.
Okay.
Leaving room or, or maybe it doesn't make sense to leave room for if there's a firm that can design electrical and lighting versus stormwater management elements versus paving. We're just looking for one stop shop to design all of three of these.
I think we want, cause like with a no dig policy, or one dig, sorry, one dig plan, we don't wanna be digging one place for stormwater and digging another place for electric. It's like cheaper just to do it all at one time and place, so it feel like it's better coordinated.
That is correct. No, no matter what, uh, construction firm is, uh, contracted, um, and depending on how much we can actually get done, even if we can't do the, uh, solar canopies and the lighting, um, all of the, uh, underground structures should be put in place, um, so that when, when we can't afford to do. um, all of the, uh, underground structures should be put in place, um, so that when, when we can't afford to do so, um, everything can just, uh, drop right in. So yes, we are moving forward with the one dig policy. I'm sorry, it was a little hard.
Question.
I hope I answered your question.
Question. Um, when will this, so this RFP has to go to Carol for, um, for the tweaking, and then it'll go out. Where does, where are the RFPs posted?
I think this is a me question, or a clerk Hudson question. Clerk Hudson, do you know where we post them?
Yes, they're posted, they're posted on the eMaryland Marketplace is the main place they're posted. They're also posted on the town website. Um, we also then, um, use social media to let people know that there's an RFP. We also put a message out on Constant Contact. So we use all our social media channels to advise them of the, of the RFP. But, uh, we are supposed to use eMaryland Marketplace, uh, for RFPs for the town.
I'm wondering, is it worth putting it on ours, um, like our Constant Contact and stuff like that? No, I'm saying, is it worth doing it there? Because, um, isn't that just for our residents?
Constant Contact. How many people, what's our reach with Constant Contact?
We send it out to over, I think it's like thirteen hundred people. So, and every week, we get people that sign up. So, and I think the last time when we had, um, warrant bills, I think that actually came from a Constant Contact lead. So we want to make sure it goes on Constant Contact.
There is the plug for VIR program. There is a email Constant Contact list specifically for residents. You have to tell us your address and prove you're a resident, um, and it's probably not necessarily worth putting on that because those people are mostly getting Constant Contact as well. I do want to kind of share something from, because I, I've been at NLC this week, um, and one of the things that I keep hearing is, we were able to get this grant because we had a design. You can get this grant if you have a design. You have to be shovel ready. Your town can get this grant, even if you're tiny. So.
Is this the hometown grant?
There's a whole bunch of them.
Because that's the one that I was going to ask, um, ask the board about, this hometown grant for the, um, for the arts, um, um, the arts committee to, to work on the Pocket Park with.
Oh, yeah, there's a bunch of different ones, and
And it has to be shovel ready.
We'll have to, I think, that sounds familiar, but Carol's the one who has all that information.
Yeah, I was going to, I was going to ask about that.
Uh, we, I would just send an email.
Yeah, I know.
But this is different, like, there, the federal government is, um, there, like, Department of Transportation, Labor has, like, transportation grants, and you can get, like, extra workforce. It, it's, there's, it's wild, the things you can do through these grants. And City of Mount Rainier, which is also one square mile, much more dense than us, just got over nine million dollars for a streetscape project. So we can do this. We just have to have the planning. So I think one of the things, because we're small, because of how we did things, we, we just, we're like, hey, can you pave this? But I think spending, uh, and investing in a design is actually going to free up more federal and state grants for us.
Okay, so we just start with the design process for this RFP, and then see if we can get some money.
And then we might be able to apply for grants.
That makes sense. That's, that's.
Commissioner Pravat, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. The only, the question I had was about getting the federal grants, uh, like Mount Rainier, but if we can get the design, then it will, we'll be able to do that. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And NLC provides a lot of free resources to help, so, um, so I didn't, I'm not trying to, because the commissioners are here, that are here, but I want to make sure we don't leave out Commissioner Pravat.
I'm right here.
All right. So are we comfortable with this moving forward to something we can vote on at the end of the month?
Yes.
Um, all right, so that's good. We're going to take up item A, Resolution 2024-06. I'm going to let Clerk Hudson introduce that. Clerk Hudson?
Yeah, I'm back. I'm here. Resolution 2024-06, regular town, oh, it's actually, it'll be a boardwork session. March 12th, 2024, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro, approving an assignment of the town's contract with Conduent State and Local Solutions Incorporated for automated speed and red light camera enforcement services to Medexo Traffic Management USA Incorporated, and authorizing the Americans to consent to the assignment.
Um, Chief, do you want to explain a little?
Yes, basically, um, Conduit is being bought out by Medexo. So in order for us to continue with the original contract, we have to sign this agreement saying that they are switching vendors, and we're just staying in compliance with, uh, everything that they've already laid out. Nothing has changed in the agreement. It's just a, basically, a name change. Our rep is the same. It's just a, it's just a buyout. So we don't have to do anything other than you guys approving it, and I believe the, uh, mayor or the attorney signing the contract to just change the name.
And, and just so everyone knows, the attorney, uh, Chief and Clerk Hudson have been back and forth with Medexo, with each other, really making sure that this agreement is up to the right standards for the design. So everyone knows that it's been reviewed and modifications sent and accepted and made by the attorney.
So how long is our current contract with the old company?
It's actually the same company. What they did was, I believe, I don't know for sure, but I believe they just changed their name.
So I get it, so I understand how, sorry, I was, I get it. I just want to know, like, how long is the contract?
Uh, I believe it's three, it's three years with a two-year, um, extension.
So it's not the same. It is different, because they're making us extend. What if we don't want to use?
No, 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 no. That's the orig, that's the original agreement. So we're staying with the original agreement.
Okay, okay.
I thought you asked for what was the original, so that was my fault.
Yes, 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 I did. Um, so I guess my question would be, why do we have to sign a new contract, even though they changed their name, when, if they're, if it's a buyout, normally, you can keep your current contract, and you don't have to change the name until your contract is up. So you have to terminate the first contract to sign the new one.
No, there's a clause in the original agreement that if they sell, change their name, or whatever, we have to stick with the same conditions as the original agreement. So that's, that's a provision in the original contract, so that basically, we're still honoring our original contract. We're just changing the name. So basically, nothing changes except the name of the company.
The attorney's not here because that's expensive. That's why we don't have them come. But they reviewed this, they advised the resolution, they advised, yes, we need to sign it, but XYZ changes need to be made. Um, so it has been fully vetted by the attorney.
So what changes, you said XYZ changes need to be made?
Oh, Chief would know the specific changes that, um,
Realistically, the, the major change was the company, the vendor had to register, the issue was that the vendor needed to register in the state of Maryland. So that's what needed to change, because the original name that they gave, there was two other words that needed to be added. I think it was USA Inc., and they just had the Medexo International, whatever it's called, but they needed to have USA Inc., which is registered in the state of Maryland. So the whole business name had to be on the official paperwork, because the partial name is not listed as the official business name. So that was the back and forth. Um, and I know these three other municipalities had to go through the same process, where they changed the name with those companies as well. But they say it's similar problems that this business does not, um, operate in Maryland, so they had to actually fix the name on multiple contracts.
Thank you. Multiple municipalities are dealing with this, and probably the county too. I think they have Conduit.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have questions? So this is not on the agenda, but we are voting, so we do need to take public comment. So I'm opening up for public comment. If you are online, please raise your hand. If you are in the building, please come up to the podium. Clerk Hudson, has anyone raised their hand online?
No, they have not.
Okay. Right then, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2024-06?
There's a move.
Is there a second?
Second, sorry.
Uh, what, is there a second?
Second.
Clerk Hudson, would you call the roll?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner La.
Aye.
Commissioner Pravat.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. We are going to move on to administrative updates, and there is an item that we were like, should we put this on the agenda? But we don't have all the details yet, so it is an administrative update. Let me take this box out of the screen over here. Clerk Hudson, do you want to explain this?
Will do. Uh, the Town of Upper Marlboro was contacted by, um, Jesse Hightower, who is the address coordinator for Prince George's County, uh, Department of Planning. And currently, 14806 Pratt Street, parcel 167, located between Pratt Street and Main Street, shown below or on the screen, is out of the address sequence. Originally, it was assigned 14800 Pratt Street, but for reasons unknown, it was changed to 14806 in 2011, putting it out of sequence with 14804 directly to the east. They're, they are proposing that the address be changed back to 14800 Pratt Street, but need consent from the town commissioners before proceeding. So we have contacted town attorney Karen Ruff, and she has advised us that a simple resolution will do. Um, that resolution has been drafted, and we are in the process of getting it, uh, vetted through her for legal sufficiency. So that should be back, and we can vote on that. If you, you all agree, we can, you guys can vote on that at the March 26th, uh, regular town meeting.
So what, what benefit is it to the town for them to change their address?
I think it's honestly nice that they're asking us, especially given last week. Um, so I, I don't know that it changes anything.
Okay.
Maybe it was that way back in 2011, they?
But yeah, they changed in 2011 for reasons they can't understand, or they don't know. The town would not have, I don't.
Sorry, what property?
Oh.
Is that a property? Is that, that's not the Pocket Park.
It is, it's the, it's, if I'm looking at this, this is the place where it's like a title company. So the Pratt Street is right there, and there's the church there, and then there's that, I think it has title, I don't know if it is a title company, but I think it might be vacant, and then the bank premises behind it.
Oh, the title company, it's still the Maryland Tag Company?
Yeah.
It's still there. Still there. I met the owner.
Okay, so they're there.
But they're, they're never in there.
Right. That's why I guess I thought it was vacant.
Yeah, I met her somewhere else.
Okay, cool.
She told me she had a bad one.
Okay.
So, so Commissioner La, do you want to know, are there any implications for anything that we would have to do? Do we have to update any directories, repositories, and information?
Going to cost us money?
Yeah.
I mean, the, the, the business license, like, she theoretically has a business license. We just need to change her address in our database. She would need to change the address in the database, you know? So I don't, there's minimal administrative costs for this.
I'll have an objection to it.
The only thing we might want to do is we might want to reach out to her and make sure she knows they're changing it.
Changing the address to what?
We'll, we'll forward you the email. I just didn't want to create confusion, because I didn't have all the information back from the attorney. I lost.
Yeah, I'll text her. I have her number.
Yeah.
To give, to the owners who owns it.
Clerk Hudson, would you forward the email to the commissioners, please?
Not yet.
MNC PPC, I think. It's MNC PPC that's proposing it?
That is correct.
Maryland Capital National, Maryland Capital, National Capital Parks and Plants. We will take public comment when we get to that section. Do Chief or Darnell, do you have any concerns about this? I'm not sure if we?
No, I don't.
Okay. Um, do either of you have administrative updates while we're here?
No, I do. Sorry, Chief.
All right. Clerk Hudson, do you know of any other general government? I don't think there are any other.
Nothing as of right now, that I'm aware of.
Thanks, guys. We're going to move on to public comment. If you're here, head up to the podium. If you're online, you can raise your hand. We have hand raised online.
Go ahead, John.
Joe, Clay, Old Bob, real pipe. Um, as I was a town commissioner in 2011, I do not remember ever being asked about them changing the number before. So yes, it's nice that they actually asked us for this.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, guys. We're going to look at the next meeting agenda.
That will be on March 26th.
March 26th.
Oh, you have, I was going to ask you about it. Try to be even fun there. That's great.
Well, so that's the rolling agenda. We'll move, we move stuff over onto the, we, we made that, that slide stays there all the time. When Clerk Hudson develops a slide, that slide is always there. So we don't lose track of the things that we said we wanted to talk about while we're doing the budget.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Remember when he created that?
Yep, exactly.
So we don't lose focus?
Yes, okay. So the agenda for next time, though, is the one in the white. Clerk Hudson, would you please read the, um, business item? Thank you.
Will do. A, public comment on the town tax rate, five minutes. B, Resolution 2024-07, the Pratt Street address change, board vote. And C, Church Street RFP, board vote.
So we have for now, um, we can also provide an updated draft of the budget if you want, for initially, like, I think it might be nice to let the public have, or even if it's just open budget comment for the public to, if everyone's okay with that?
Yeah, I think that would be good.
Is everyone feeling okay about this? I don't want to throw more stuff on, because I know we have
So we're going back to our rolling agenda after budget season.
That was kind of the hope. Yeah, that was, but if, if we want to add something on, I just don't want to overburden staff or overburden ourselves, especially two new commissioners who just get elected, and we're like, here, we're doing a budget. That's a lot to take in.
Well, we're still knocking off stuff, because we got the vendor fees on there. We just did that.
Oh, yeah, we should take that off.
Yeah, so that's going to be off.
There will probably be an annihilation agreement to vote on, um, by the next meeting as well, so that may pop up in there.
And Marlboro Day Town Road Transfer Agreement, that can come off.
I need new glasses.
I, I'm squishy. I left my glasses. I think that's it. I mean, and then we can move.
Yeah, there's a couple of things we can take off of there, yeah.
Yeah, and then we can start just like, moving maybe like one or two things each meeting, so that the rolling agenda doesn't become too long.
And I know our, um, new code.
Because we have to still address this issue, yeah.
And our, our new code compliance officer has ideas on property standards, so we're trying to incorporate those in now. Um, as well. Um, on that note, a green card is not a citation. It's just a note to fix some things. We're all getting them, or lots of us are, um, so just don't panic. If you have questions, call If you have questions, call Town Hall, and um, he is, Mr. Ock is very nice. He will explain to you what he put on that ticket and what he needs you to do, so. All right.
Right.
Um, we'll move to, well, this is just a reminder about a lot of events coming up. And we'll be getting this out to everyone soon. If you're interested in volunteering, let us know, and.
Oh, Lord.
Happy birthday!
Twenty-one, hey! Thank you. Now we can ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Is there a second? Would you call the roll, clerk Cozen?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Commissioner Pravat.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And before we hang up, we want to say happy birthday, John.
Happy birthday, John.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, that was John's birthday?
Same day.
Oh.
Boy, they're twinsies.
Oh, good, happy birthday, John.
Thank you.
Both twenty-one.
Oh, no.
Forever.
Just say yes, just say yes.
Forever twenty-one.
All right, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.